Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise and Trustee Clark, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I will call the roll. Trustee DeCostela.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Present.
Trustee Navarro.
Present.
Clerk Reyes has asked to be excused. He's traveling. And Supervisor Wilt is here, so we have a quorum. Okay. First item is the approval of minutes of the September 9th meeting. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9th meeting.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections?
Trustee Navarro did an excellent job on these. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And she's been called into duty again tonight, so, thank you. All right, there being no objections, all in favor of the acceptance of these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. All right. I don't think there are any communications that need to come before this board that aren't part of the packets, so we'll just run through quick reports before we get to the rest of the agenda. Farmer's market is over, so we distributed a total of 696 vouchers to 67 households in the roughly 19 weeks the market ran. Twenty-five of those receiving them never used a single voucher, but of the 46 who used them, 35 used virtually every one they received. I say virtually because once in a while, there was one that they must have lost. I reimbursed vendors for a total of 453 vouchers, or $2,265, and that's roughly a 65% redemption, so that was pretty good. Donations to the pantry have been stronger this month with schools in session, and the shred event helped as well. As social media has observed, the clock is fixed and functioning, but I'm searching for someone now to make it look good again as the numbers are fading and the frame is crumbling. I believe our participation in the North Riverside Autumn Fest was a good reminder to the community that we're here to serve, even if our chili did not win. It was a beautiful evening, so attendance was huge, and for the first time I can remember, we ran out of chili quite quickly. The shred event also went well, and I thank the board members who were able to stay to the end and move the donated food to the town hall since I had a family commitment and had to leave. Assistance inquiries continue with several actual applicants having been served with, let's see, no. With several actual applicants being in process right now. Sorry, I don't know where that came from. Trustee DeCostela and Nina from our staff took care of our participation in the Riverside Recreation Department's trunk or treat last week. I was unable to be there, but I understand there was a tremendous crowd, much larger than previous years, so they ran out of candy pretty quickly. And thanks to the library, which apparently shared some of their giveaway items so that we wouldn't be empty-handed. That evening, Trustee Navarro and I attended a symposium by the Metropolitan Township Association, to which township officials of Cook County members were also invited. It was well-run and similar to the TAC annual event. I went to two of the breakouts, one on budgets and one on levies, one on budgets and levies, sorry, and one on mental health boards. Although I've been at several such programs, you always learn something new, and I did. That's all I have to report, but if anybody has any questions, I'd gladly fill you in. Okay. Assessor isn't present tonight, but their work has been extended. That's, so they're working extra hard. The the appeal, or the application for those whose whose real estate taxes were increased by 50% or more were supposed to cut off on the 10th, and without giving the assessors any warning, the assessor's office decided to extend that to the end of the month and reduce the qualification. So if the increase in taxes was 30% or more, people can appeal for this one-time possible refund, rebate. However, there's a limited amount of funds, and you have to qualify, of course, financially. Otherwise, it can't only be the increase in taxes, but it created kind of a mess, so they're working on those appeals. They had to reach out to a wider group of people because it was, you know, the standards were lowered. So they've been quite busy, and I'm sure that's why nobody's here this evening.
Any word on when the tax bills are coming out?
None at all. The assessor's office monitors. There's a website where they can check. There are still a number of things to be checked off that are supposed to be corrected or reviewed. Some of those are extended to October 15th, which is tomorrow. That was last week. I don't know what it looks like, if they've got any other longer dates, but
No word as of
There's no word as of now. Okay.
Actually, I have one more question on it. You said there would be eligible, if they're eligible, would be a one-time rebate, or?
It's like a $1,000 refund.
Refund.
So it's some kind of assistance to help you pay.
But not lowering the tax bill?
No. That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
So. All right. Trustees' reports. Trustee Clark?
I just wanted to say the exercise class continues to go well, and we have our fraud thing next Tuesday. And I will be setting up a time, hopefully, with a pharmacy to come here to give flu shots.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Trustee DeCostela?
Thank you Supervisor. Just a follow-up, it was a very nice event for the Riverside Park District for the trunk or treat, and it was overwhelming, the amount of people that showed up.
Well, you've been there in past years.
Yes, it was, there was a line where the Riverside garages, so they had a triangle, there was a line all the way out for people starting at that beginning.
Wow.
Very well attended. It was a beautiful, beautiful day. The weather was great, so yeah, we did run out of candy and treats.
Yeah, here I thought it was too early and nobody was going to show up because the kids didn't have costumes yet.
They showed up.
Okay.
Wonderful day. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Navarro, do you have anything to report?
Just the symposium was, I learned a lot. I'm glad I went. I attended two breakout meetings, legal issues and First Amendment issues. So it was, the First Amendment issues are where reporters, well, they're not called reporter, are they called reporters?
No.
I'm not sure. People, citizens can come and film village events and, in some spaces and not others, and there's been issues in townships where if the staff has not been properly educated and not warned, whatever you want to call it.
Prepared.
Prepared, prepared. Things can go a little sideways, but
Yes, they left a video and put it on YouTube.
Yeah, right. So that was interesting, and the legal issues were kind of tied into that, and they talked a little bit about reporting, and when you can, not reporting, records retention, and when you can destroy certain records, and how to keep certain records. But it was, it was very nice.
Very good.
Kelly, were there any AI policies brought up, or any issues regarding AI?
No, there were not, not in the legal seminar that I was at. No, it was
That's still so brand-new. I mean, I'm sure that it will be coming down the pike.
Yeah.
But it's, it's very, it's very new right now, but I'm sure there will be something coming down with that, down the pike.
All right, thank you. And Trustee Heilenbach?
Okay, good evening. Our next mental health board meeting will be tomorrow night. It'll be at Aging Care Connections. We have a community engagement meeting right now. We do have a presentation that we're going to give to the block captains of North Riverside next Tuesday. I believe that's at 7 o'clock. And Dr. Joe Treani and Cindy are going to be handling that meeting. I may swing in there too, to see how it goes, but the presentation will be very, very good. We are back on schedule with getting the notes going and everything else, so I'm sure that this, this next, our next monthly meeting, you'll have a nice packet of stuff. I already have Joe's notes and so on. So we'll be handing those over. Also, the shred event went pretty well. It was, it was a nice day for a change. And it went very, very well, thanks to Trustee Clark and Clerk Reyes for bringing the food back over to the township. But it was a very, very nice event. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we will move on to new business. And the first item is the annual township audit. We have our chief auditor here, so if you'd like to introduce yourself for the cameras, and then also just give us a synopsis and
Sure. My name is Ed Tracy. I'm the audit partner from Selden Fox. Been working with the township for a number of years and have appreciated the, always appreciated the cooperation we've gotten from the management and the board and everyone involved. So we certainly want to thank you for that. We did conduct our audit this year. Part of the audit is reviewing internal controls. We take, we do walk-through transactions, see that controls are operating as design, and overall, we felt the control structure was good. Transactions properly supported, proper approvals, things like that. Reconciliations between subsidiary doc ledgers and general ledger, all taking place. And the use of an outside accounting firm to assist you with that and the monthly closings and all, is a good, good control as well. We do make some adjustments to the financial statements when we do our audit, and there's really two sets of financial statements. There's fund financial statements, which is what you look at on a month-to-month basis, and then there's government-wide financial statements, which is really just part of the audit, and it's more of a long-term focus. So we made a couple, we made five adjustments to the fund financial statements, primarily to record transactions that took place outside the year, or after the year-end, but relate to the year-end of our audit, so picking up accounts payable, adjusting accrued payroll, picking up property tax revenue received within 60 days of the end of the year as revenue for the year under audit. Those are just kind of some of the typical adjustments that are made in these types of government audits. Then we also make adjustments to convert those fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. And that, again, the government-wide financial statement's more of a long-term focus. It's what's called full accrual accounting. So, for example, when you purchase computer equipment, say, in the fund financial statements, that's an expense. In the government-wide financial statements, it's considered a capital asset put on the balance sheet and depreciated over time. So these are the types of differences. These long-term assets and long-term liabilities are in the government-wide financial statements that aren't in the fund financial statements. So besides capital assets, it's like your debt that you have. That's a liability on the balance sheet in the government-wide statements. And then when you pay it, it reduces the liability, and it's not an expense, whereas in the fund financial statements, it's an expense. And then you also have your net pension liability with IMRF. So those, those types of, we make those adjustments to convert the fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. As far as the fund financial statements are concerned, just a couple highlights from those. So there's three funds being reported, the General Town, the Community Mental Health, and the General Assistance Fund. All three reported positive fund balances at the end of the year. In the current year, the General Town Fund reported revenues over expenses of just under $200,195.696. The Mental Health Fund reported revenues over expenses of $29,497. And the General Assistance Fund actually had expenses in excess of revenues of $42,858. But that was planned, there was some existing fund balance in there to absorb that. So it was budgeted to have excess of expenses over revenues. At the end of the year, the General Town's fund balance was just under, was about 95% of its annual expenses. The Mental Health Fund balance was about 35% of its annual expenses. And the GA Fund still had significant reserves as, you know, those, it's pretty restricted as to the use of those funds, so you have those reserves available should the need arise. In all instances, expenses were under budget in all three funds. And in all three funds, the overall bottom line was better than budgeted expectations. So not only were expenses under budget, but your bottom line overall was better than budgeted expectation. So all in all, it was, it was a solid year financially for the township. Did a good job of, I mean, keeping your expenses, watching your expenses and keeping them in line with budget. And revenues generally were at or above budget as well. So not, not really any bad news to report.
Very good. Are there any questions?
Is there anything that we need to do better?
Better? Yeah, I mean, I think overall, I mean, I think I really like the fact that you do use an outside accounting firm as a second set of eyes. That's something that I think is a good use of resources because you do have limited personnel, obviously, and so you don't necessarily get the perfect segregation of duties that you'd like, you know, would be in the utopia type of thing. So to use that outside accounting firm as a second set of eyes and oversight, in addition to the board's roles as their oversight, is something I certainly would recommend townships do, particularly ones that, you know, don't have as many employees. So I think that's a good thing. And again, I think it's just a matter of, you know, when you're setting your budget, you know, you should be budgeting at, you know, realistic levels, which you seem to do, so that's good. So I just think the budget process is such an important part of the overall control structure and the overall oversight that you provide, so just, you know, continue to take great care in doing that.
Okay. And so we're in good financial shape, and I think that's a tribute to Supervisor Wilt and the staff that they, you know, keep an eye on things. You know, they're fiscally responsible, and I think that's really good. So thank you Supervisor Wilt.
Thank you. All right.
I do, I'd like to echo what Trustee Heilenbach said. Thank you to Supervisor Andrew and our staff. They're always doing a great job. And I do have one question. The fund adjustment, is that the proper terminology that you mentioned, that does not require budgetary transfer, correct?
I'm not
So the adjustments that you made in the audit
Oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah. So the adjustment, adjusting journals we make, no, they don't. They don't require budgetary transfers. You're still, even after those adjustments, you're still well within budget. And some of them increase the expenses, some decrease the expenses because, like with the accounts payable, we're picking up some payable, but then we're also reversing what we picked up last year. So there's somewhat of a net. The overall net effect of our adjustments was under $20,000.
Okay.
So no, there was no, no, nothing further needed to the budget or anything. Thank you.
Is this information available?
To the public? Yeah, everybody, yes, the board all received it by email. You have hard copies in your packets, and it's available for review by the public.
Yes.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate Andrew's help, your help, everyone involved in the audit, and we certainly enjoy working with the township, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
The electronic world has made that easier. All right. On to item B. We have a request to waive rental fees from the Olmsted Society for their annual meeting. We approved this at a previous meeting. There, we approved their use of the building, and they are serving alcohol. That is why, even though it's a Friday night, there are fees involved. And their board did not quite communicate with each other, so I believe you have a copy of their note requesting consideration of
Have we waived, I mean, she's I don't know if this request to waive the fee means just the room rental fee, or if she's wa, asking us to waive the insurance fee also?
Well, the insurance they pay for.
I know, well, I know.
No, they don't, they're not asking for a waiver of the requirements, only of the fees that would be charged. And that was the fee for the use of the auditorium, a security deposit for that. They also use Room 22, and there's a deposit for that. So that's what they're asking for, a waiver of the fees. You may remember that last year, after they had gotten the approval, they came back also, and their president came before our board and after stating his case, decided to withdraw the request. And we were quite baffled by that. We didn't understand why. But that happened. In previous years, when they have applied for the request of the room, they've, they have asked for that waiver. I think it's a change in their leadership which has caused some of these afterthoughts, shall we say.
So in previous years, we have waived the fee?
Yeah, not last year, but in some years we did. When requested, we have waived it.
Only upon their request?
Only upon request. We don't automatically waive fees.
So what would, what would their waived fees be?
It's a total of $450. So it's rental of $100, and deposit of $200 for the auditorium, and $50 room rental for Room 22, and $100 deposit.
So now they are asking for the waive of fees?
Yes. I
Can you clarify that Supervisor? Is that fees and deposits is $450?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Ah, okay.
Right, the rentals are $150, and the deposits, because there's alcohol being served, and sometimes that causes a little more damage, we ask for a deposit of $300.
And that's, that's the thing that gets me, is they're serving alcohol. This is their annual meeting. We've set a precedent in the past by waiving this fee. We charged them last year because they didn't get, come to us, or they wanted to, and they backed out, or whatever the case may be.
Right, then they changed their mind.
You know, Olmsted Society, you know, is a great organization here in town. We've waived it in the past. You know, we've done the same for the library, waived the fee. I, I don't have really a big problem, with the exception of the alcohol.
What you could do, I mean, presuming that they're going to get their deposit back, you don't have to waive the deposit. You could just waive the rentals.
That's what I would be more willing to do, is to waive the rental fees, but they need to put the deposit
And they'll get the deposit back if everything's good.
Refundable deposit?
There you go.
It's refundable upon inspection of the premises afterwards.
So I was just reading over their letter, asking for the waive of fees, the handwritten letter.
Right.
And yes, they are a very nice organization, does a lot for the, for the village. I notice on here, it says they help the village forester weed, plant, mulch, anything related to maintaining the beautiful common green spaces. So I, and that's wonderful to see. I was kind of curious if they did anything out front of the building or property here when they do those days?
No.
No? Okay.
That's not included.
It's not included, okay.
So the fees are just $150, is that what it is?
The, yes, the rental would be $150. The security, the deposits would be $300 on top of that. So what is your pleasure?
Go ahead, Mary.
I would say that we can waive the rental fees, but they still have to make the deposit for the alcohol.
Which will be refunded upon inspection.
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to waive the $150 in rental, but still require the deposit.
Refundable.
Which is refundable, yes.
Upon inspection.
All right. Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Heilenbach, to waive the $150 rental to the Olmsted Society for their annual meeting, but continue to require the deposit, which is refundable upon inspection following the, the event. Any discussion? Hearing none, then I will call the roll. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is a special event request for a memorial on October 26th. And this is because they would be serving alcohol, so of course the usual requirements of insurance would apply. What is your pleasure?
I think that we should grant this most, this request for a memorial event on October 26th.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark to approve the request of the, for the private memorial service. Do I hear a second?
Can we go back, just with alcohol being served and property insurance?
Yes. So the alcohol, the reason this comes before us is because they would be serving alcohol at the memorial or the celebration of life, or whatever it is. They would be required to provide dram shop or service insurance, alcohol service insurance for that. And otherwise, the, there are the rental fees. So this would simply be to approve their special use because of the alcohol services. Believe, I had a motion. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee DeCostela to approve the special use request for October the 26th. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, then I'll call the roll. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilt votes yes. Thank you. Okay. You have before you the proposal for the coming year for the employee health insurance renewal. There is, there was an alternative, which we've always said was a possibility, but the increase would be roughly $380, I'm sorry, $280 per month for the current enrollment. We're a small group. It's very hard to place us. We only have two employees participating in this, so it's kind of a take it or leave it, you know. We, the other thing is, this is all on HMO, so it's already as low as we can go. And the alternative would be a slightly lesser premium. However, you can see that the deductibles and out-of-pocket and everything changed dramatically on that.
So if we went where the renewal would be, around $200 more?
Around $280.
$280 a month.
Yeah, just going to $300.
Right. $280 and change.
And if we went to the alternative, it's only less than, just over $100.
Yeah.
Right.
So you're not
We're not saving very much there.
Not saving anything.
And there's more deductible on the employee
Right.
Costing them more.
Right.
You know, I've always said that, you know, our employees, they work awful hard. They don't make a lot of money.
Right.
You know? And I think, you know, paying this insurance is a perk, if you will. And I appreciate what they do, and we don't, and Supervisor Wilt's right. We don't have a big area, or a lot of people, so it's hard to place us.
Yeah.
I'm actually shocked that it's that low of an increase.
Right.
I really am, so
Truly, yes, because what I've been hearing, the increases are much larger overall.
Pretty.
Okay, and we do, we pay 80%, they pay 20, so. Okay, so, what is your pleasure? Do I have approval on this, in going forward with the renewal?
I'll make a motion that we approve the new health insurance rates. I believe that's going to be a total monthly premium of $3,397.51.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hylandbach, seconded by trustee DeCassola, to approve and accept the increase in rate for our employee health insurance. Is there, are there any questions or any discussion? Hearing none, then I will call the roll, because it's an expenditure. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCassola?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, yes. Motion is carried. Okay, there's a proposed list calendar of closing dates and meeting dates. There's two pages of this, so, one is for the, the regular board meetings on the second Tuesday. This would be all except, every month except November, when we adjust because of the Township Officials of Illinois meeting, which covers that date. And then holidays, this is pretty much similar to what we've got going this year. We haven't added any, there's nothing taken away. Christmas again falls on a, on a Friday, so, I believe the village, this kind of mirrors what the village is doing. All except, they typically do not close, I believe, for Columbus Day. This time, they did, but only to the public, they had it in service, yes. So, and then, we schedule, as usual, we schedule for the first Tuesday of each month, except November, because there will be an election that day, so, several of the rooms in the building would be occupied for that. We schedule them for the first Tuesday of each month, just in case they're needed. It's easier to cancel a meeting than to post a notice for a committee of the hall.
Do we need a motion?
Um, just, we, yeah, we probably should have a motion to accept this, that is a, and then we can post it, so. I will entertain a motion to accept these dates.
I make a motion that we accept the 2026 township meeting dates and holidays.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee DeCassola, to accept the proposed township calendar for 2026. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Just trustee Navarro? Just in November, our meetings are always moved to the third Tuesday.
Thanks.
Just to.
Reason for it.
Thank you.
Right, so this time, that will be the case as well, because, yeah, this year. Okay, next, it's that time to think about what we're going to do for the holidays for the food pantry recipients. In the last few years, we have been giving one gift card, depending on when they want it, either at Thanksgiving or Christmas. So, either in November or December, when they come, we give one gift card, and in the past, I think it, this number has stood for the last couple of years. It might need to be increased this year, depending on how things go. We currently do have, I think, 86 households that participate in our food pantry, or have participated at least once this year, maybe even higher than that.
And it's, the gift card is for 50?
The gift cards are $50, and we.
I don't know.
I don't know, that's up to you, I mean, this board can, can decide to make it more.
They're either at Aldi's or Riverside.
It's either Aldi or Riverside Foods, we try to give them as locally they, they work. So, usually, the Riverside residents get Riverside Foods, and the, the North Riverside and Brookfield, and Lyons, whatever, whoever is getting food pantry in the restaurant.
I mean, we've got it at $50 for, forever.
Well, it's been about two, three years, maybe, because we did have, we, previously, we gave them, we gave two, and we had like 35, you know, $25 ones or something, so.
Well, should we raise it to $60?
That's.
We would need, you said 86.
Well, I don't know that we'd need 86, not everybody comes all the time, quite frankly. We have people who only come in the summer because they like the fresh, the option of the farmer's market.
So, we had 70 last year, and we had none left over, it worked out fine.
Actually, I think you had to go out and buy a few more, didn't you?
Actually, no, I think we did, we actually wound up doing 70 the last couple of years. I usually don't buy them all at once, I pace it, you know, so that they don't go missing or something.
Why don't we increase it up to 80, if need be, at $75 each?
$75?
Yes. I think that, if my math is right, and I use my calculator, 5,600 maybe?
Okay.
To help people at holidays.
I think, you know, with the way grocery prices are going, I mean, they've stabilized some, but still, I mean, I remember going, you know, going into the grocery store, and, you know, it's just me, and walking out of there with $40 worth of groceries that now cost me about 80 bucks.
Yeah.
Same stuff. So, I agree with trustee DeCassola on this, I think we should go up to 80, and, and they get it once a year, either at Thanksgiving and Christmas, and if I'm not mistaken, most of the people come at Thanksgiving time, so.
So, are you saying we buy 80 cards worth $75 each?
I would be comfortable with that.
80 cards at $75 each?
Yes.
And I would also say with the discretion for supervisor Wilt, if need be, purchase more.
Yeah.
Now?
Plus or minus 10%, I would go on there.
Okay, plus or minus 10%? So, is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to that, yes.
I have a motion to purchase plus or minus 10% of 80, you said, gift card?
80.
80 gift cards of $75 each, equally split between Riverside Foods and Aldi, or whatever, yeah, all right. I try to keep it to stores that are within the township, and those are the only.
That's entirely up to the numbers easiest.
Okay, so, I have a motion to approve 80, plus or minus 10% gift cards at $75 each for, for the holidays, either Thanksgiving or Christmas, for the food pantry participants.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Motion by trustee DeCassola, seconded by trustee Hylandbach. Is there any discussion?
I think he's a winner, especially if you're buying him at Riverside Foods.
Right. All right, then, I will call the roll on this. The motion is for 80, less or minus 10% cards of $75 value for the food pantry recipients. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCassola?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
And supervisor Wilt votes yes. Motion is carried. Okay, on to the holiday stroll, it will be on December 5th. We have here a request to participate, potentially make a donation. I, my proposal would be that we, once again, host, there's already been some back and forth about this, we would host the District 96 choirs, and provide some kind of entertainment. I'm working on what kind of entertainment that will be, because the magician that we've used for a number of years passed away in the last year.
Oh, no.
I have, we did utilize somebody who's much better known now, in 2018, we used Trent James.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
He's very good, but back then, he was 600, and I think his rate is a lot higher now, because he does Vegas and everything else.
See if we'll cut us a deal.
Well, I, I can reach out to him. I have also inquired, it's a little off the beaten path, rather than a magician on the stage, the lib, the North Riverside Library has had great success with having a reptile group. They bring out animals, and the kids love it.
They.
It's, it's not my cup of tea, but the.
It says Christmas all over.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it? Maybe they'll come up with, I've reached out just to see if they're even available, or, you know, what the rate would be. But, you know, I'm trying to, trying to think outside the box, does it always have to be a magician? Not necessarily.
Can the choir do a sing-along or something like that, or?
They, you know, what they do, is they do it in two groups, and they pack that auditorium so bad, that I'm, one of these days, I'm waiting for the fire department to close it down, because it's, it's standing room only, and like, double the standing room only. The people are pouring out into the hallway and all, and it gets out of the blazes.
The second it's over, is the second there's a bad dash out of here.
Right, and that's why, you know, I think if we had something else running, even other than another program in the auditorium, if there was something, say, in this room, for them to stop at, people come after the programs are over and say, oh, anything going on? Oh, well, you know, they've asked again to do the displays of the artwork, so, I've said that was okay, that the, the schools provide like the snow globes.
They take the artwork all up and down the stairs.
Right, that, it's all over the, the building, but, you know, other than looking at that, we don't have anything else going on, whereas the other places in town have entertainment, you know. One year, we had a balloon artist, but I think somebody else is, does a balloon artist now.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it may not be the reptile, but maybe something like that, something that would be attractive to the kids.
I, I agree, we don't have to have a musician, I'm just.
A magician?
Magician.
Or musician.
But I'm not sure a reptile.
I know. I don't know, maybe.
You know, I, so the library doesn't, library does it for the, the summer reading kickoff, and I don't think it's related to that either, but the kids love it, I mean, they just flock to it, it's crazy.
Take a look and see, like I said, nothing says Christmas.
If you need help.
We'll get them little bitty hats.
The albino python.
Maybe if they don't bite, they don't, there's no allergies involved, like dogs, you know, I don't know, maybe it's weirdly, but if you need help running things down.
Tattoo artist.
What?
The one from the North Riverside, remember that?
Yes, that was at the.
Yeah.
Autumn Fest.
So, are, we're responsible for finding the activity, then, or?
We're not, but they've got enough on their hands juggling everything else, so I think if we have something to say about it, we're paying for it.
Sure.
We might as well look out. Now, if any of you have other, something else that could go on, let's say, in this room, so that there's something as the, because those concerts are over within like an hour.
Yeah.
They, they do a, a change, a changing of the guard, they switch out one group of kids, there's usually a little show in between, but if there's no show in between, they'll be fine with that too, but people still come to the town hall because we say it's open, so, if we have something for them, if you have something else that you think would be of interest, let me know.
Does the village hold some, do something in this building?
No.
What did they, what did they do, anything?
No.
No, last year, they were running their fundraiser for the.
They were, yeah, they were selling raffle tickets for the, for the street signs.
But they did not, they don't do anything in the building itself?
Otherwise, they don't.
And we had that artist opening last year, too.
Correct.
Yes.
She was in the hallway as well.
She was in the hallway, yeah.
I don't, it seems like over the years, that, obviously, the concert, but the magician was always a hit as well, he was a very, he was very good.
I mean, I will look into Trent.
Honestly. But, yeah, the, I, I think the magicians is, if we can find one reasonable, it's good.
Okay, I will inquire, I will look for somebody. One year, we also had, there was a guy who had some of the puppets from Kukla Fran and Ali, or from, and that, but that was just weird.
Oh, really?
It was him, now, now, it was Kukla Fran and Ali, and some of the, Garfield Goose, Garfield Goose.
That's right.
But I think that he's gone, I mean, this was like 10, 15 years ago, yeah, yeah.
With Grange, I don't know, with Grange area.
I'm glad some run down ideas. You know, maybe I can call the Junior Women's Club and see what kids like these days.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm taking ideas, so.
It's gonna be.
I don't know if I'll enter the building for that night.
You know what, if it's, if it's not the, that, I actually have encountered another animal handling, they have exotic animals, I did a paint party where they had, we painted a sloth, and they had a live sloth there, they also had an armadillo, they had several other kinds of animals, so, I mean, it doesn't have to be that.
Reptiles.
It doesn't have to be reptiles.
I was gonna say reptiles and puppets, two of the things I'm most afraid of.
Maybe I could bring in a clown and finish everybody else off.
No.
Yeah, I agree. Nope.
Anyway. All right, well.
So, we, so there's.
If you have any other suggestions, I, I think yes to the participation as to what it will be, do you want to give me a budget of how much we should spend?
How much did we spend?
Did we spend about $1,200?
No, it was less than that, I think it was like six, 700, something.
Five, $600 range.
Yeah.
So, between six and eight?
It's up to a thousand.
I'd say up to a thousand.
A thousand's kind of a lot.
It, I mean, depends on how many people enjoy it, I suppose.
So, 700 plus, plus 10%. You go over, yeah, gives you an extra 70 bucks, knock yourself out.
I'll have to think about this a little bit, and see if we can come up with something.
Well, as far as what, yeah, we, we certainly can hold off, welcome, we can certainly hold off as far as what the entertainment will be, but give me a price range, if you would, I mean, I, I think there's no question that we want to participate, but.
Yeah.
700 plus or minus 10%.
Okay.
Can we just say 750, or whatever the 10% up is?
770, up to 770.
70, 70.
All right, can I have that as a motion, since it is money?
I'll make a motion that we approve a budget of, what do we, 700, plus or, plus 10% if need be, for the entertainment for the holiday stroll, which is always very nice.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Hylandbach, seconded by trustee Navarro, to authorize up to $700 plus 10% if necessary, for entertainment for the holiday stroll. Any discussion? And I will keep it to something that is not going to scare my own trustees off, possible. I will call the roll, trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee DeCassola?
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt says yes. Thank you. Uh, December the 5th.
December 1st.
Sadly, I will not be here, sorry to see the, we'll be out of town.
All because of the reptile.
We're all gonna be out of town.
Yes.
We'll see.
They'll be closed.
You're coming?
I love the holiday stroll.
I've been here.
I have been.
We'll see, okay. Next item is the Township Officials of Illinois.
Can we back up?
Yes. We don't typically donate anything more.
Oh, so that, so you don't, we don't have to do the registration or anything?
We will do the, I mean, I will register us as a location, but yes.
Okay.
I'll take care of it.
I didn't know if there was something else that we had to do with that.
No.
Thank you.
No, our donation is the entertainment this year.
And the use of the hall.
Use of the hall, absolutely.
For the concert, for the.
Yes.
Right.
So, as you may or may not realize, next year is the 250th anniversary of our great country, and Illinois, America 250, is, is a real thing, it's going on, and the Township Officials of Illinois have encouraged townships to approve a resolution, or adopt a resolution, celebrating that, and it would, I can read this for, for the record, "Whereas the United States of America will commemorate its 250th anniversary on July 4, 2026, marking a historic model." marking a historic milestone in the nation's history, and whereas on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, the Second Continental Congress formally adopted the Declaration of Independence, asserting the American colonies' freedom from British rule, and laying the foundation for the principles of democracy and self-governance, and whereas the U.S. Semi-Quin, Semi-Quin Centennial Commission, known as the America Two-Fifty Commission, AmericaTwoFifty.org, was established by Congress in twenty sixteen to plan and orchestrate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, aiming to engage all Americans in commemorating this historic event through educational initiatives. And whereas the Illinois America Two-Fifty Commission was established to develop, encourage, and execute an inclusive commemoration in observance of the founding of the United States of America and Illinois's imperative role in the nation's history, and whereas the Illinois America Two-Fifty Commission encourages communities, libraries, schools, local governments, historical societies, cultural institutions, and individuals of all ages to develop inclusive commemorations that reflect on Illinois's role in the nation's history and development, and whereas recognizing and supporting the Illinois America Two-Fifty Commission will help ensure a meaningful and educational commemoration for all residents and future generations, and whereas the commemoration provides an opportunity to reflect on the state's historical significance, honor the achievement of its people, and inspire civic engagement, and whereas the Township of Riverside in Cook County hereby formally supports the Illinois America Two-Fifty Commission and its mission to commemorate our nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Township of Riverside in Cook County expresses its support for the Illinois America Two-Fifty Commission and encourages all Illinois township communities to organize and participate in local events leading up to and culminating on July fourth, twenty twenty-six, to celebrate America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. That would be adopted this day. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to sign and adopt a resolution in support of Illinois America Two-Fifty commemoration.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Navarro, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve, adopt, and sign this resolution supporting America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
I do have a quick question regarding it, would be, would it be appropriate to post this somewhere in the office or door or?
We will, we will, in the, probably in the next newsletter and such as well, and put it on the website, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, initial discussion of the township tax levy, I haven't come up with any numbers yet. I think we, like it or not, need to go for the maximum. It looks like, as of this meeting last week, they were indicating that the CPI is, I believe, two point nine. So we would want to go for the max. I will start running some numbers, and for our next meeting, I will have a proposal for all of, for, for the levy for the coming year. That's all I have on that. Under, for your information, the, you have a copy of the Annual Treasures Report, which is a one-page summary of the financial condition of the township as of the end of the fiscal year in March. This is another item that by law we must file by the end of September, that was done, it was also filed with the clerk. Also, in your packets, you have the Identity Theft Scams and Tips flyer. Please spread the word that we have this, this program on October twenty-first, courtesy of the Attorney General's Office. Also, a reminder that the Township Officials of Illinois Conference is next month at this time of the month, and therefore our meeting will be the following week, the third Tuesday in November. If you have not registered and you plan to attend, please do so, as the advanced deadline is October twenty-fourth. And I know that trustee Clark is going, I don't know if any of the rest of us are able to. I have some difficulty getting away for that period of time, so.
Are, anybody planning, Matt, are you planning?
I cannot, no.
Trustee Highlandbach?
I've got way too much going on right now, so I don't know.
Represent us well, I don't know, if they don't have too much going on, maybe we can still get Mary Jo to go, she might be interested, I don't know.
That'd be great.
So, we'll, we'll see about that.
Real quick, regarding this, the, whoever wants to attend does not have to respond or anything?
No, just walk, walk in.
Just walk in.
Very good. Okay, then we are up to the approval of warrants.
Trustee Highlandbach moves that the Board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified in the general warrant for October of twenty twenty-five in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, as presented to the Board this fourteenth day of October, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Clark, any discussion? Hearing none, then I will call the roll. So, all in favor of accepting the general warrant for October twenty twenty-five in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents? Calling the roll, trustee DeCassola?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, yes. Motion is carried.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach that the Board ratify and authorize payment in the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for October twenty twenty-five in the amount of one thousand, two hundred, twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents. The payroll warrant for October of twenty twenty-five in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred, eighty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. The health warrant for October of twenty twenty-five in the amount of three thousand, four hundred, twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. The general assistance warrant for October of twenty twenty-five in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred, sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. The township radio players warrant for October twenty twenty-five in the amount of a hundred and eighty dollars. And the food pantry for the October of twenty twenty-five in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred, fi, fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. All of the above presented to this Board on the fourteenth day of October, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by trustee DeCassola. Just a note on the payroll, please note that there were three employee payrolls in that period because of the way it fell. So that's why it's pretty big, so. Restating the motion made by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee DeCassola, for the approval of the following warrants, utility warrant in the amount of one thousand, two hundred, twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents, payroll warrant in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred, eighty-five dollars and sixty-six cents, health warrant in the amount of three thousand, four hundred, twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents, general assistance warrant in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred, sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents, the township radio players warrant in the amount of one hundred and eighty dollars, and the food pantry warrant in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred, fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Any questions or discussion? Then, hearing none, all in, I will call the roll, and trustee DeCassola?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, yes. Motion is carried. And are there any public comments? I don't hear any, see any public here at this point. Thank you for your attention, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee DeCassola, seconded by trustee Clark, to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you.